Looks like it's just family tonight, so there we go. It is good to see all of you, though, on Monday, November the 4th. I hope everyone had a great weekend. I know there was a lot going on around Tifton this weekend. Makes me very, very proud to live here and to be able to work with this great organization and the people that work so hard to make sure that we have an outstanding quality of life. So before we get started with the meeting, I just want to thank Hillary, I want to thank Abby, I want to thank all the group that worked so hard to make the Arts Affairs successful, to make the farmer's market successful, and all the things that were happening. And we're going to introduce our new theater manager in just a few minutes, so we'll get back to that. But there was some great things going on, so just want to say thank you. And thank you to all, the entire team. It takes everybody, our police department, our public works department, our management, everybody working together to make these events a success. And it was a beautiful weekend, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. And I know everybody had a great time.
Let's not forget Michael with ESG as well.
Yes, he did. Michael Mitchum does, uh, where did he stay?
I'm not trying to hide.
He's hiding back there behind the column. He does a great job. He sure does. All right, gentlemen, we have been called to order, and I will remind those that might be watching on YouTube, our YouTube channel, that tonight is our workshop. And most of the items that we'll be talking about this evening, we will not be voting on. We'll do that at our regular meeting, but we will be approving the agenda. So Jessica has sent that out for us in a timely manner, so that we've had plenty of time to review and look over that. So I'll present that to you for a motion concerning the agenda.
Move to brew.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So that does carry. All right, the first item on that agenda, I'm going to call on Jonathan Taylor, and he has an award he wants to talk about. So Jonathan, you have the floor, and thank you for taking care of that.
Well, thank you, Mayor Council. Just wanted to kind of let you know that I applied for an award to an organization that I'm a member of, or the city's a member of. It's called Georgia GMS, but it's also a part of a larger international organization. We applied for an award from a technology grant that we got for doing the digital marquees down the street at the theater. Well, I've won that award, and the award is presented to, it's what they call the G2C, so it's like government to citizens, and the government is fulfilling its mission, is expected to collaborate with and serve other entities. This competitive award recognizes the GMS member agency whose IT project exhibits the best example of G2C for the year. And so we won that award. I was presented it at their August meeting, which I was unable to attend, and so I was just able to receive this at our last Georgia conference meeting this couple of weeks ago.
That is awesome. And again, anytime our community can be recognized, but I know you worked significantly on that project, and we thank you for that. So anytime we can receive that recognition, so the rest of the world knows what we know, that you're doing a fabulous job, we really are thankful for that. So that is a great award, and we're very thankful to you for going and accepting that on behalf of the Tiff Theater. Since we're talking now about the Tiff Theater, Larry, do you want to introduce our new theater manager?
Yes. Very proud that we found the, it's Larry. I can't remember that.
Kesia.
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 Nice. He's already worked with the figure.
Yes.
You know, he's got three plays, and he's director of the theater.
Okay.
Director of the theater. He's turned, we were very glad that he was down to get into the job and come on board with us.
Wonderful.
Today is our first day, so welcome her, support, play, movie, whatever she puts in the theater. Very excited.
Well, it sounds like there's great things happening at the theater between Kesia, between the award that Jonathan's brought back. So welcome to the city of Tifton, and we'll look forward to working with you and getting to know you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Jonathan. All right, under new business, we've got a lot of things to discuss. Larry, do you want to talk about the increase, potential increase for the landfill tipping fees?
Yeah, as you're aware, I've been mentioning this several times over the past year or two, that we need to look at that. And it's come to that point where we do need to increase it $2. It's going to be a 4.7% increase, that $2 on moving it from $42 to $44. We haven't had an increase on the tipping fees since September of 2018, so it's a six-year period. Over that six-year period, inflation's been at about 25%, so our costs of operating the landfill have increased. So it's time for us to get a little more revenue coming in. Our solid waste fund balance in 2018 was 18, 8,700,000, and in 2023, it was only down to 5,808,000. So we've seen a steady decline of our fund balance at the landfill, so that's why we need to do something now. This increase will amount to $192,000 annually, which will help that fund. Additionally, over the past year, we purchased the 295 acres for a million dollars, and then we bought a bulldozer and an off-road dump truck for another million. So we've depleted the fund balance even more. So I got with Jim Carter, and he's presenting the same thing tonight to the commissioners, so he's pretty much in agreement with that. So hopefully, we can get them on board with that. And that's pretty much it on the tipping fee.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions regarding that tipping fee? And we have, we've kind of thrown that out and talked about that, like you said, Larry, several times over the last couple of years. So any questions, comments, if anybody has? Okay. All right, Larry, do you want to go ahead and go into the next item about the prospective increase for Ryland and increasing the garbage rate?
Yeah, related to that, Ryland's going to have to pay the increased tipping fee at the landfill. So we're proposing for them to go up $1 on the per-can fee, which is like a four, it's a 5.7% increase. Along with that, they haven't had a price increase in two and a half years, and over the past two and a half years, inflation's hit them like 10%. So they need a little help. So we give them a little bump on that side, plus the landfill, recouping the landfill tipping fee. So that amounted to $1 per can, which is a 5.7% increase for the residents.
Okay. Did we have any, I know we had talked at one time about what it would take to implement a small increase for Ryland to pick up all yard debris regardless of the size of the load. Did we ever, I don't know that we ever really voted on it. I don't know if we need to readdress that. Now might not be the time, I don't know. But I know just lately, in the past couple of weeks, I've had a couple of calls from people who have put out loads that are bigger than the permitted size, or whatever you want to call it. And Aaron's been great to work with to try to address some of those things. But it would be, I know we had talked at one time about a slight increase that would just allow any size load, basically, it's mostly yard debris, to be put out, but also what they call those bad loads, where that could be increased as well. So I don't know what the pleasure of the council is. I'll throw that out for discussion if y'all want to, or we can look into it more.
Yeah, I had a couple of people reach out to me, and it was, it was, they called it bad load. So explain to me what bad load is, and it was, for lack of better words, it was investment, you know.
Where they move tenant out.
And they're just junk, for lack of better words. So, you know, and that was kind of one of the things I said, well, what if, you know, what if there was just an increase or a flat fee, or some, just kind of brainstorming, I mean, so that there's not a, on a case-by-case basis, places where they've got to contact, you know, Ryland and say, hey, you know, we've got that XYZ address, I've got, you know, a dresser and some old clothes, and what's that going to cost, or, you know, we can't pick it up, or whatever, you know, whatever it is. So I definitely would be looking at something like that.
So that's something y'all want to look at? I can get with Ryland and Aaron, and we can look at it and see what we can come up with on that. I would like to thank Aaron and Ryland for the work they did cleaning up after the storm. They took 2,500 tons of debris to the inert landfill, and that's a monumental task in itself. So it's much appreciated all his work and Ryland's work in doing that for the city, so.
You know, while we're talking about that, one more question. I've had a couple of people that have reached out to me this week that are tree companies, that are, you know, obviously, the cutoff date is over, it's coming, going, I guess, the 31st, and maybe I can address this to Aaron. But, you know, for them to bring storm debris?
Well, we give them the whole month of November to do that, yeah. In fact, we owe the inert landfill like $35,000 for all that debris. Hopefully, we can recoup that from FEMA when we file our claim, but we owe them $35,000 for all that debris.
And I was, the one gentleman that called me said that, I guess, he took a load out there, and they were telling him that it had to be dumped in a different area now because it wasn't under FEMA or what. And I don't understand all that. But the problem was, he was saying, you know, that these people he's dealing with, their insurance adjuster comes, they can't, they're just kind of lagging along, but I don't know where you start to stop that. So, I mean, I should.
One question to that. There was a schedule, first two weeks, everybody dumped. And after that, all of the big haulers were done.
Did.
The schedule was worked out in there.
Is that going to the inert landfill or the landfill, the inert?
The inert.
Okay. I wonder if they went to the wrong place. I wonder if they went to the landfill, and they said it needs to go to the inert landfill. I bet that's what happened. That's what it sounds like.
He told, the guy that took, the guy called me, told me that he took it to the inert landfill, but there was a section that was, and I haven't been out there, a section that was roped off at first for labor.
When I, yeah, the small contractors, like the tree contractors, and their mom and pops, started paying after 14.
Okay.
When I say big haulers, I meant like ESG, Ryland.
Oh, yeah.
They were extended to the end of the month.
Okay. So the local tree guys, they're just paying for their loads at this point?
They're getting paid to do it, so.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on it. I mean, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Because I know it gets very confusing. We've had dates and deadlines, and landfill or inert, so everybody else is good. Okay. And y'all are okay with us exploring the prospect on the bad loads and stuff?
Yeah, I would say, Larry, you and Aaron, together, just figure out what's possibly fair for everybody, and come up with something.
Yeah, we're making, if there's a potential to make changes, that might be just make one full swoop of changes, and then it's handled and everything, so.
I would say, anytime I've reached out to Aaron, and usually they do bulk out and pick up some Friday, you just call them, give them the address. I mean, they're right on it.
Yeah, these price increases are effective January 1st, so maybe we can get something for December, where we can get it in at January 1st also.
Sure, okay. Okay. Well, if you don't mind checking into that for us with Aaron, and I know we've talked about it, of course, so hopefully, we can just pull those files back out. All right, any other comments or questions regarding garbage, debris, bad loads? Good, okay. All right, to the next item on our agenda, Larry, is the one-time pay incentive for employees, considering that. So let you explain that to us.
This is the same thing that we did last year at this time with the ARPA funds. Inflation during the COVID period has been at 22%, and the employees have only got a 2% and a 3% raise during that time period. So they haven't kept up with inflation over this period. So last year, they got a little bump, and then this year is the last bump with those ARPA funds to help make up for that gap there.
And that is an acceptable use of those funds. I know a lot of communities.
Right, right. There's a line item there for COVID impact to inflation for employees. So it's a line item for that.
This is the one-time year-end incentive?
Yeah. Well, we did it last year at this time, so this is just the second one. We have to use all these ARPA funds by December 31st, and we have this in the budget. So it's covered in the budget for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is well deserved. I mean, you were just bragging at the beginning of the meeting, you know, how our employees, they do such a great job. So, I mean, this is no brand here.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments on that? All right, moving on to the resolutions we'll discuss. One is accepting the FY 2022 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program Award in agreement. So Jonathan, I'll turn the floor back over to you to talk to us about that.
So I was notified a couple of years, probably 2022, of a federal grant. The feds were sending monies to local states to then be distributed to local city governments for cybersecurity. And so I applied for that grant, and again, it's now being awarded. Notice of award was actually October 1st. So now I'm looking at the 2022 version of this grant to kind of make sure we can fulfill all the requirements that are necessary. And actually, I received notification the other day that the 2023 version of the same grant is coming out for applications in the next week or so. So, yeah, we basically were awarded this when I applied for it, and then we will use it for cybersecurity.
Okay. And you said that's federal money?
It was federal money, federal getting distributed to the states and then distributed locally. So that's where, there's a lot of paperwork associated with it.
Oh, yes, exactly.
We're looking at it as we speak.
Good luck.
Total federal regulation.
Good luck. Just a reminder, for any of our departments that are applying for anything that is connected with federal, I had the opportunity last week to be involved in a meeting with Senator John Ossoff, and their office has just been incredible to work with. They've truly very, the cross-party lines, they don't, they look at community, not, you know, not your political affiliation. And anytime that we need any kind of support letter, anything like that, they are happy to talk to us about the project and provide that support letter. So, which really goes a long way to getting these grants approved. So just keep that in mind, if you need that letter, we'll get that, so. Good. Okay. Any questions, gentlemen, on the cybersecurity?
So this grant, any amount of $80,850, is that right?
There is, there is a.
And we pay the city.
There's a small match, like a 10%, so we have, we have to cover about $8,000 of the total.
Okay. Well, congratulations. Again, good work. Good work. All right, our next resolution to discuss is the resolution to designate downtown's Christmas Open House as the festival. So Hillary, I'll call on you to present that information.
Yes, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. We are quickly approaching the holiday season in downtown Tifton, and many of our merchants are excited to announce that we are going to host our Christmas Open House again this year. The date for that is going to be Thursday, December the 5th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And kind of what that is, is our merchants, they come together as a community and extend their shopping hours late into the evening just to kind of offer something fun with exclusive shopping deals and savings giveaways. Last year, we hosted this as a community, and it was a success for all of the merchants that participated. This year, we would like to ask you all to consider designating this under the festival ordinance, kind of like as a sip and stroll, like what we do for Second Saturdays. We have just seen whenever we are able to offer this with our events in downtown, it kind of makes it like an exclusive higher-end event. We get a lot of moms and girlfriends that come out and take it out as a night on the town. So you'll just see kind of the details of that in your packet, and then also a map that kind of designates the area for that. It's going to be a great night in downtown. In addition to the Christmas Open House, we will be opening our ice skating rink to help kick off the festivities for hometown holidays. And then the Heritage Foundation, I believe, is doing the tour of homes. So Mr. Bruce Green with the Tifton Council for the Arts is heading that up for us. So a lot of great things will be happening that night, and we just really believe that offering this as a sip and stroll can help add to the fun of that.
Absolutely. And I saw the first Christmas decoration up downtown.
Yes, yes. So kudos to ESG for getting the ball rolling with that. It's kind of crazy to think that we just ended trick-or-treat last week, and we immediately roll into Christmas, but it takes a village to get our community ready for that. So we're really excited to see downtown transform, and then the excitement that'll happen in Fullwood Park this year with all of the new lights that we'll have as well. So a lot of great things are happening.
A lot of great things.
Yes.
Do you want to go ahead and mention the lighting of the, what'd you call it, the Festival of Lights, the park lighting, the official throwing of the switch?
Travaganza. Yes. So on Wednesday, November the 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., we are hosting Fullwoods Festival of Lights Celebration. And kind of what that is, is you all, Council, know that last year, we put a lot of focus in downtown with the new Christmas decorations that you'll see, with a promise and commitment to our community that we'll put focus in Fullwood Park this year. This fiscal year, you all voted for $125,000 investment to go into Fullwood Park, and I think we all can agree, it was very much needed. And so we have ordered over 65 new Christmas displays and light displays to put in the park, but then also, we're working very closely with ESG to update all of the string lights, and just the excitement in that. So we just really felt like our community needed to see that and to experience that all at one time. So on November the 27th, we're going to light the park up at 8:00 p.m. We'll have live music out there, letters to Santa's station, hot chocolate and cookies for the kids to come out and enjoy. So it's going to be a great night, but I just really wanted to offer our community something fun and exciting to experience the true beauty that our community is getting this year.
Perfect. All right, questions?
Love it.
Thank you.
That means you'll be there.
I'll be there.
I hope so.
With all the kiddos?
With all the kids.
We might need some help plugging in extension cords and whatnot to make it all come on at one time.
Julie babysit.
Yeah, that's, hey, I'll take them. They're good kids. I'll take them.
But yes, so thank you all for truly making that investment for our community this year, and we feel like this is a great way to highlight that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you, Hillary. All right, I'm going to turn everything over to Jessica. She's got the next three items for our discussion. One is a resolution approving policies and procedures for the 2024 CDBG grant. And then Jessica, I'll just let you kind of roll into those next agenda items. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, they all offer the same reason for the $2000 block grant. The last thing y'all expected that award, to kind of get everything established that we have to put in place. So the first thing are the policies and procedures. What are the, what's the structure for how the funding will be, if it does go to owner-occupied, and obviously we're going to locate, how that process takes place, if that's been established. This is going to amend what we already do, so we kind of have that place re-adapted, re-adapted with a program. And then the land with access plan, it's a federal fund, so to, that's sure that, there is why, does not, like, that is accommodation, that's our federal funding, and how we would do that with the application. And then the final thing is the professional services agreement, and that's for that grant. We already signed agreement, paid, right, that way. So this was the, it's been awarded, it would get a portion of that grant, for, and it's correct.
Okay. And for those that might be hearing about this for the first time or seeing this, the target area is South College and, was it College Chairs? I'm trying to find it in my, College Circle, thank you, was the target area. And Jessica, what I've been doing is people have called me, is just kind of refer them to you to get the information.
People that have asked for what their effort, and who've been of a lot of county.
Sure.
One county, and, with, 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 they can also apply for funding, they are a city resident, and they live in the target area, we support them all.
Right. Okay, perfect. So it's okay just to funnel that to you, and then you'll, okay, okay, excellent. Okay. Gentlemen, any questions or comments about the CDBG? We're very excited to continue the work in our urban redevelopment area regarding those improvements for owner-occupied homeowners. The next item is under ordinances, and it's discussing an ordinance to amend city code driving motor vehicle in a careless manner. So I'll turn it over to Chief Hyman.
Yes, thank y'all. What it is, we already had the ordinance of operating vehicles in careless manner, which would be the subsection A, but we wanted to add subsection B and C to it. The reason B and, is that I received a lot of complaints, okay, like at 20th and 41st, right there with 50th and that, like Eric got his blue trailer there, you got the produce place, people are leaving 20th instead of going up to the red light and turning to the right, because the light is red, they're just straight across the parking lot. And Eric talked to anybody, said that people almost got run over. So I sat around one day, and I watched, and there were quite a few people doing it. And then, when I done my little research with my law, I didn't find anything that we could charge them with, you know, in order to, you know, that we already had that was free. So then, went back and found another town that had covered that, and a guy with Rob, and so we had that section in. We have a bad problem with it right there at Second Street, too. You know, where you come up to Second, and you're going south, and you come up to Second Street, and they have stations right there across the Christmas. They'll come up there and they're just straight across the parking lot, and then they're out in front of somebody else, you know, but the danger part couldn't cross the parking lot. And then, right there at Eric's tire, you have it, there's some other places in town where it does the same thing. And to the safety, we need to express. So, and then, then subsection C, you know, it says, any person operating vehicle upon three highways within the city shall drive in the same careful and prudent manner, having to guard to the whip, or prevent the current corners traffic, and all other attendant circumstances, so as not to endanger the lives of them or property of any person who may be driving in such manner that constitutes careless driving and a violation of this section. We wanted to add that in. It's more of a safety thing than, but we need some kind of method to be able to control and make legal stops for.
Sure, okay. Any questions?
Subsection A was very limited, as far as what constitutes careless driving, like spinning your tires, fishtailing, zigzagging. And so when Steve got with me, we addressed the problem we had with the cut through, and then I looked for something that is a little bit more broader, that would catch other acts of careless driving, which is why we'll put in there subsection C.
Gotcha. Okay.
This would be punishable, punishable by citation?
Yeah, it's a, it's a state ordinance, so it's not jailable.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Chief. Appreciate your work on that. And did you and Rob graduate from the same law school, or?
No.
Just asking.
Just, just GPA, mine is good.
Oh, okay. I was wondering. That's why I had to ask. Thank you, Steve. All right, under other business, now we have our board report, and we do have some terms that are coming up on our Downtown Development Authority, Hal Baxley. His term will expire at the end of this year. On the Tifton-Tiff County Tourism Association, William Bowen, who represents the city, his term will also expire. And then in Keep Tiff Beautiful, you can see, we do have two vacancies that are open there. Our policy has been to go back to the boards that these people will serve on, and ask them to make a recommendation if they want to recommend their person be reappointed, or if there's a new applicant that they might be interested in. Have either of these submitted there? Has Hal?
I have it on there. It's been a while since I had another one.
Yeah.
I'm letting them know what's coming.
Okay.
I will read them.
Okay, perfect.
Come back, probably, you know, it's going to be, I know they, they do have, probably have such a basic problem of, I know that's the one time that they're going to, which is a lot of, so they know.
Okay, all right. Any questions on board report, gentlemen? Good, okay. All right, city manager report, or is your report going to encompass the McGuire Woods?
Yeah, well, we need to go to.
That's it.
Deal with that objective section.
Okay, all right. City manager?
Well, as usual, we've got a lot going on. Police Department, they've had a uptick in auto entries again, so they're working on getting that solved and stopped. And there was a few arson's of dumpster fires in the city, and there was an arrest made for that. So hopefully, we won't. Police Department, they've had a uptick in auto entries again, so they're working on getting that solved and stopped. And there was a few arson's of dumpster fires in the city, and there was an arrest made for that, so hopefully, we won't have any more of that. Public Works, Adam is over at Jekyll Island, receiving an award for the city from the Georgia Water Professionals, for the city of Tifton having the best large groundwater system in Georgia.
How about that?
So, that's a big award that Adam's proud of. I know he keeps our water system operating efficiently, and he's proud of that award, and we're proud of him and the award.
Absolutely.
For the city of Tifton, so, so we have good, clean water in Tifton.
It's important.
And projects, we got a ton of projects going on. We just received another grant from the Federal Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration for $868,826 to replace 3.67 miles of gas mains and service connections. So, that's another grant we've received that we'll be working on. We just finished up on LMIG 2023, we finished up on Tiff Avenue, so I think we're through with LMIG 2023, and you won't hear that anymore, so we're proceeding on with LMIG 2024, which we've already received 603,000 LMIG funds there, and we'll be paving 46 streets in all LMIG 2024. That's, we received LMIG 2024 and a supplement for additional roads, so that totaled up to 603,000 in funds that we received. So, we have plenty of splotch funds for paving to match that. The bids will be going out this month, so we'll get the final number on what it's going to cost, but we have the splotch funds to, for our match on that. So, we're excited about that. The Fullwood bathrooms, they put in the hardware on the northeast section, so hopefully, they'll be putting in the partitions and, and getting that set up, that way they can move on to the other set of bathrooms, the, the park stage, I don't know if I told you all that, but it's in bad shape, and it just needs to be torn down, the foundation is unstable to, to build on for improvement, so they're just gonna, Adam's gonna try out his new bulldozer on it that he purchased there recently, so we'll just demolish the site and start fresh with that. So, bids will be going out this month on that also, so we have to finalize the number on that, because we use some of the ARPA funds for that, so we have to have a commitment on those funds by December 31st. So, hopefully, we'll have some good news. It was estimated at 500,000 originally with Tourism Board matching 50% of that, so hopefully, we can come in close to that with this change in the plan, so we'll find out that later this month. The playground equipment for Fullwood Park, it, it should be shipped and on its way to us, and so ESG can go ahead and clear out that old playground equipment that's on the south side there, so we can get going on that this month. The ARPA, all the ARPA projects that we have, the ARPA Agorama, we met with the Agorama and ABAC about the, the electrical service, that was the last bit of conflict we had there, so we'll be running it down the road, so they, they should be good with that. So, we, we should be proceeding on the Agorama lift station. We got bids going out on the ARPA wastewater blower replacements and the ARPA lift station bypass pumps, so we'll be doing some of that tomorrow, and then next Tuesday, we'll be doing the other part, so hopefully, we can get that going, and get those bids in, and get that going. Eighteenth Street, that's the Tia project, we're, we're replacing five culverts down that street. We needed 10 easements to be able to do that, and Rob worked on that for the past few weeks, and code enforcement and community development is presenting those easements to those 10 residents where we can get their approval, and then we can proceed on that project. The U R A Board made their trip to Atlanta and looked at the mini homes, or techie homes, or whatever, and it didn't, I don't think everyone was quite in agreement that it would fit for those five acres over at Nine Oaks, but, so we're still looking at what would best fit for those homes over there. We're trying to increase the homeownership in that area, instead of putting more apartments, so we're still exploring that. The landfill expansion is going good, we cleared out some stumps from the new acreage, where we can use some of the dirt, plus they'll be doing deep-weld drilling to check the sub-layer clay material, for checking that for the expansion, so, I think that's pretty much it. Hillary went over all the activities going on at Main Street, of course, we got Second Saturday and Farmers Market this week, and then all the Christmas festivities coming up in November and December. And the theater, we have the swinging medagins coming Friday night, so get your ticket.
There you go.
All right. That it?
That's it.
Man, that's a lot. Any questions, gentlemen, for Larry on that, on that good report? Okay. Mayor and Council comments quickly, and then we'll go into executive session for legal purposes. Anybody want to start?
I'm good.
You good?
Yep.
You good? Anything?
Everything.
Okay, well, everything's rolling along, and, and, so what we'll do is, I'll need to take a motion concerning going into executive session for legal?
Make a motion.
Okay, so we have a, real estate? Well, now you're confusing me. Okay, for real estate, pardon me.